I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allred.
Present.
Mr. Andreessen. Mr. Fell. Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. McFarland.
Present.
Mr. Rose.
Here.
Ms. Sims. And Ms. Yu.
Here.
All right, so it looks like we have a quorum. Before we get started, if I can remind the commissioners to please remember to turn on your mic and speak into the mic, because we've heard that there have been some issues with viewers of the video recordings, that they haven't been able to hear everything. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from the November 9th regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any motions or comments on the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McFarland. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rose. Any discussion on the minutes? Any changes? If not, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. That brings us to our continued public hearing. We have a continued public hearing from the November 9th meeting. This is Plan Case Number 2480, PUD 23, a request from Marty Smith on behalf of Carle Foundation for approval of a final residential planned unit development located south of Federal Drive, north of Carver Drive in the R3, single and two-family residential and R4 medium-density multifamily residential zoning districts. I want to remind everyone that the public input portion of this public hearing was declared closed in our previous meeting and that the commission was in discussion when there was a motion to continue the case to our next meeting, as well as a request that the applicant consider the issue of Federal Drive access to the site and the possibility of modifying the site plan to reflect that access. So before we resume discussion, I want to first give the applicant an opportunity to respond to this specific question and then we will go back into discussion amongst the commissioners and possibly entertain a motion to vote. Mr. Smith? And if I could ask you, please keep your comments on the question and thanks.
Thank you. I understand that based on your questions and direction at the last meeting that we're to address the issue of access and so I'll refrain my comments for anything other than just access tonight. The site plan that we submitted in the final PUD application is situated on the South Lot 101 of the larger 12-acre tax parcel. This lot's not contiguous to Federal Drive and will not have access to Federal Drive. The North Lot 102 is contiguous and will have access to Federal Drive. Lot 102 is not part of the PUD application and is not being proposed for development and will remain farmland for now. The design of Hope Village on the south portion with Carver Drive access followed best-practice land use, zoning ordinance, and PUD criteria based on the following. It meets the criteria in the Urbana zoning ordinance for approval, which states that the proposed development is conducive to the public convenience at that location. Hope Village is a residential development best suited, connected to an adjacent residential neighborhood and accessed by a residential public street, not a commercial-industrial area. Direct access to a collector or Main Street. It also has nearby access to public transportation and bus service, convenient for pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, vehicle transit, and close proximity to two hospitals and other medical services. The Carver Park subdivision has two public street access points into the site, Dory Miller Drive to the east and Carver Drive to the west. These public streets dead-end without turnarounds or access back out of the neighborhood so it can safely be assumed under generally accepted planning principles that these two public streets were intended to be extended as future development occurred. Additional benefits to the neighborhood from Hope Village being developed on the South Lot with access from Carver Drive are it will provide turnaround for emergency and maintenance vehicles exiting the neighborhood and permanently restrict any additional traffic from connecting to future development to the north through Carver Park subdivision or from Dory Miller or Carver Drive. As a low-density residential development, Hope Village eliminates any chance for access through Carver Park subdivision to a higher-density multifamily development allowed by right in the current R4 zoning ordinance. Orientation to the North Lot and access off of Federal Drive does not meet best-practice land use for the following reasons. It does not meet criteria in the Urbana zoning ordinance for approval, which states that the proposed development is conducive to the public convenience at that location. It does not provide direct access to a collector or Main Street nor nearby access to public transportation and bus service. Heavy commercial truck traffic and lack of sidewalks on Kenyon Road, the only feeder street to Federal Drive, present safety concerns for Hope Village residents, pedestrian, and bike traffic. Travel time to the north Federal Drive location adds significantly longer response time for emergency vehicles, putting the Hope Village residents at higher risk. Residential development to the north conflicts with the existing commercial-industrial business of a charter bus company, express delivery distribution center, contractor supply, food service distributor, and other industrial business traffic. Based on these conditions, we request a recommendation for approval of the final PUD application you have before you to the Urbana City Council. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your response. Sure. Any questions for the petitioner?
You're asserting that Carver Drive is a collector street?
No, it has access to a collector street, Bradley Avenue. Direct access.
Well, okay. But Hope Village does not have direct access to Bradley Avenue.
That's correct.
Except through a non-collector.
That is correct.
Any other questions?
Would we have an opportunity to review what you just read to us? May... I've found the... I've been looking for good reasons to not have access from Federal Drive and we haven't really seen those yet. This is the first opportunity I can discuss what I just... my opinion that I just expressed. But to fully determine whether this decision to retain Carver Drive as the main vehicle access, I feel deserves study more than just a verbal presentation of some materials. I don't feel equipped at this point to say that the reasons you provided verbally are compelling to me. Read quickly.
Yeah, well, we can ask that... it be reiterated? That portion or...
I'm glad to give you my notes.
Marcus can run and make copies while you all are discussing... deliberating, okay? Any other questions for the petitioner? Ms. McFarland?
I would like to know would it be possible for us to visit the options that you're talking about?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Go see the site. You want about the one site versus the other? Which one would be best? Do we have an option to go on the site and just look at the options?
Well, I mean, it's open public access at some point, but...
Meaning we will have someone from your company to escort us around and tell us exactly what it is that you hope to do with the property?
I'm not sure I understand what I could do on a tour. The site plan is very specifically and well-laid out, showing the entrance right off of Carver Drive into the site.
I understand that. I'm more of a visual person so if I'm there physically looking at exactly what you're saying, that would help me out a lot.
I would be glad at some point to meet you at the site. I don't know if that helps us this evening, but by all means, we would welcome visitors to the site and would gladly show you around and you could see what Hope Village is intended to be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, thank you. So at this point, we'll go back into discussion and pick up where we left off on the 9th of November. Are there any further discussion from the commissioners? Ms. Yu?
So the retention pond. What was our discussion with regard to retention pond? Because it was feared by the community as a safety concern. And that retention pond, does it have to structure the way it is?
The petitioner... the fence, part of the issue was that the retention pond wasn't originally included in the fenced-off area of the site and that change was made to extend the fence to enclose the retention pond as part of the site. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. And another note on that is that to satisfy the sewer water runoff requirement, is that retention pond absolutely necessary?
I would defer to staff to answer that question.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So for a site that size, is a retention pond absolutely necessary to satisfy the sewer and ranewater runoff requirement?
Well, I'm not an engineer and that's... it's not a requirement that they do a specific design. It's that whatever their design is to retain stormwater on the site meets our engineering standards and that... and this does meet those standards. I cannot speak to whether it's absolutely necessary. I think that's at the engineer's discretion on how they want to handle stormwater on the site.
But there are different ways to handle it. Retention pond is one way.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments for discussion from the commission? Well, I don't think it's a question of can we schedule a tour. I think that would be something that would need to be voted on as a motion. I think... Anything is possible. I can't tell you what we can and can't propose as motions. I think that would involve a motion to continue the case if we were to do something like that.
I will be prepared in one minute to address these comments if the committee can wait.
Sure. Any other comments or points of discussion in the meantime?
May I have the floor for...
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
I attach significant importance to the issue of access to the site and that's why I'm sorry for having taken the time necessary to review this material. But the importance is stressed in the preliminary PUD approval. We are to vote on the final and the preliminary was passed by the city council with three conditions and one waiver. And the second condition is that the final site plan is responsive to the concerns of neighboring residents. And I found that in the material that has been supplied to us to date, I find that that condition is not met. I'll just go through a few reasons why. In the material that we had, there's Exhibit D, Attachment B, number six, criteria for approval. Explain how the proposed development is designed, located, and proposed to be operated so that it will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the surrounding areas or otherwise injurious or detrimental to the public welfare. And there are two sentences that follow. The gated community will be fully staffed and monitored for security and resident assistance. This does not address the surrounding areas. It addresses only the residents. Second sentence. Residents will be given ample opportunity to engage in social, educational, and recreational activities. Again, not addressing the surrounding areas. There was the letter provided by the Carver Park Neighborhood Association, which listed as its first concern, traffic. And as its first recommendation regarding traffic, we strongly suggest and propose that access be made to and from Federal Drive. So I think Mr. Smith was correct in focusing on access as a crux on which we can make judgments regarding the... regarding approval, neighborhood approval or in which I assign a lot of importance to that. The response, Exhibit M, by the staff to the Carver Park letter says that the applicants have clearly and consistently articulated their reasons for designing Hope Village. And they list three reasons. Chief among those reasons are that Carver Drive offers better, faster access to OSF and Carle hospitals. We also heard Mr. Smith make that claim. I would contend that we're talking a matter probably under a minute whether one makes the loop or goes through Carver. And I find that the decisions we make tonight should rest on criteria far more important than that. The second claim is that Carver Drive provides a direct connection to more frequent MTD bus service along Bradley Avenue. We're not... there's not an argument that prevents pedestrian traffic from Hope Village to Bradley Avenue. And indeed, we don't drive cars from Hope Village to Bradley Avenue just in order to take the bus. This is not a satisfactory argument for ensuring Carver Drive access. And the third reason is entirely predicated on the notion that if the access is from Federal Drive, that it would occupy the north side of the site and that ship has sailed. Where construction is already underway on the south side. I'll try to be brief, but the... At the public hearing on November 9th, I think seven or eight of the 12 speakers addressed traffic. Marian Harrington gave a very eloquent presentation in which she said they are not opposed to the present use. The address of the proposed site is Federal Drive and all the construction is on Federal Drive. If the design of the proposed development was flipped to have access to Federal Drive, then... Marian, I'm sorry. He did not think the residents of Carver Park subdivision would have an issue with the project. I find that very eloquent. Jonathan Howard was very poignant. He doesn't want it, having had a traffic... a car crash into his home. And so briefly, the... I proposed that we continue the discussion at the next meeting and that the applicant's designers speak to the issue of Federal Drive access. And I greatly appreciate Mr. Smith's presentation. But I find it not compelling. They... The first claim, the site plan submitted in the final PUD application is situated on South Lot 1 of the larger 12-acre parcel. This is only my second meeting, but it seems to me we have not subdivided that parcel and it's incorrect to speak of two separate lots, one of which would be unavailable for the construction of a continuation of traffic path from Federal Drive. That decision has not been made. First claim. He continued to say that the design of Hope Village followed best-practice land use, zoning ordinance, and PUD criteria based on the following. That it meets the Urbana zoning ordinance for approval that states that the proposed development is conducive to public convenience at that location. I don't find that argument compelling one way or the other regarding access. Hope Village is a residential development best suited, connected to an adjacent residential neighborhood and accessed by a residential public street, not a commercial-industrial area. We're discussing only vehicular traffic and these vehicles would include staff, emergency vehicles, ambulances, vendors, suppliers. These are, I think, largely commercial rather than residential use. So I'm not compelled by that. Direct access to a collector or Main Street, as Mr. Hopkins just pointed out, the connection to a collector is not direct. Nearby access to public transportation and bus service. Convenient for pedestrian traffic, bike traffic. These argue for pedestrian connection. They don't argue for vehicular connection. Close proximity to two hospitals and other medical services. I've already discussed that. Additional benef... I'm skipping a... These streets, public streets dead-end without turnarounds or access back out of the neighborhood. I think it's the neighborhood's sense whether that has been bothersome to the neighborhood. I doubt that it has. Additional benefits to the neighborhood from Hope Village being developed on the South Lot with access from Carver Drive are it provides turnaround for emergency and maintenance vehicles that would occur, I presume, with access from Federal Drive as well. Permanently restricts any additional traffic from connecting to future development to the north through Carver Park subdivision. To date, no one has been speaking of Hope Village as a pass-through between two separate developments. As a low-density residential development, Hope Village eliminates any chance for access through Carver Park subdivision to a higher-density multifamily development allowed by right in the current R4 zoning ordinance. I'm not sufficiently familiar with the zoning ordinance to determine how compelling this argument is, but on the surface, I'm not compelled right now. Might require further study. Orientation to the North Lot and access off of Federal Drive does not meet the best-practice land use for the following reasons. It does not meet criteria in the Urbana zoning ordinance for approval, which states that the proposed development is conducive to public convenience at that location. Again, I'm not compelled there. Does not provide direct access to a collector or Main Street. These are arguments for what... This is an explanation by Mr. Smith of what the access off of Federal Drive does not do. It does not provide direct access to a collector or Main Street. Heavy commercial truck traffic and lack of sidewalks on Kenyon Road, the only feeder street, present safety concerns for Hope Village residents, pedestrians, and bike traffic. Again, I argue strongly for pedestrian connection to the neighborhood to the south. Travel time to the north Federal Drive locations adds significantly longer response time. In terms of the decisions that we are making here tonight, that choice to go up the loop or down and around and turn left on Bradley is not a sufficient basis for my planning and land use decisions. And residential development to the north conflicts with the existing commercial-industrial businesses of a charter bus company, express delivery distribution center, contractor supply, food service distributor, and other industrial business traffic. Again, I'm not compelled. My point here is that I feel that the requirement, number one, condition, given as part of the preliminary PUD approval, that the final site is responsive to the concerns of the neighboring residents, that with what I have here, and I wish that I had had a greater chance to study this, I feel that the condition, number two, is not met.
Okay. Thanks for your detailed analysis and comments on that. Mr. Hopkins?
I'm going to shift to a different strategy here. As I... I think one thing that's reasonable is clear is the commission's not real happy with this. I'm looking out at a completely different audience from November 9th, which is instructive in itself in what's going on. So let me propose... Well, as... That's... Don't... They don't need to come in. That wasn't my point. So I think what I said last week, or whenever that was, we're in a physical, institutional, and procedural mess. So I think we need to be a little unconventional to just get through this and move on. So I would, I'm gonna propose a motion, but I'm gonna do it in reverse by giving the becausees first, so that the unconventional motion might make a little more sense. So because much of this PUD has actually already been physically built. Before a PUD permit was granted, contrary to 16 whatever, seven of the zoning ordinance, which says that no building permit or certificate of occupancy of no building permit is required shall be issued before issuance of a planned unit development permit. Now, I, I understand all of this commentary about by right portions and whether this was appropriately shifted to a PUD, whether there was a variance for parking that could have been done in a different way. The attempt that was canceled last spring to bring to the commission a proposal to change the zoning ordinance to allow multiple units on a single lot. But the point is, we're in a procedural mess. So the commission has no discretion or available use of its traditional, in this city, persuasive and negotiating power left. So because two, the commission has exhausted its discretionary and persuasive capabilities and held the public hearing that it is required to hold because of the PUD process. Three, because the proposal is an innovative, unusual proposal and project, potentially very valuable, but also therefore with unpredictable or less predictable consequences, both on the effects of construction and the effects of operation. Because the location chosen, as indicated by Mr. Rose, is arguably not conducive to the public convenience as in the sense of the residents and that therefore these less predictable effects will be effects on a vulnerable neighborhood. And five, because the city of Urbana, through funding, is actually a participant in this project, not merely a disinterested regulatory body. I make the following motion. The commission forward case 2480-PUD-23 with a recommendation that city administration continue to work closely with the applicant organizations, the neighborhood residents, including those who are actually residents of Champaign, the city of Champaign and others to mitigate the effects of construction and operation, a continuing responsibility of Hope Village.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Just so, just to clarify, this would be a recommendation of approval with conditions?
No.
Okay.
And I did not say it was a recommendation of approval and I did not say it was conditions. And the reason is, and the lawyer is already smiling, that the recommendation for approval with conditions is conditions prior to, that is, the approval is conditional on them. And the city council is going to approve this. That's not the question. What we are responsible for is making a recommendation. And what I am suggesting is that after the public hearing and given the procedural mess we're in, where the concerns and usual processes of the plant commission have been impossible to carry out, that we should make a recommendation of what the city should do. And the city council has the authority and responsibility to decide to approve this. And it's not conditions because I'm, I'm arguing that the city has a responsibility to continue to work on this, not to check off a box and say, okay, it's approved.
Okay, so as you said, this is unconventional and the options that we were given in the memo from staff don't include something like this. I'm wondering if we should take a recess and consult with the city attorney about moving forward in this direction?
Maybe you should get a second or see if it can get a second before you do that. I don't know, whichever.
Well, I, I think that, that would be appropriate. This would need a motion and a second to have a recess. Okay. Do we need to do anything with the motion on the table? Yes. I'm looking at our attorney. Dave, can you chime in with your mic on?
I guess as, as I'll, I'll kind of add to the flavor of the condition that we're in because I think it's an accurate assessment ultimately. And so, you know, typically with a motion, you're looking for a second kind of along with it in order to really kind of discuss what the actual motion is. I think in between there in terms of recessing to confer is a little bit odd and I guess it would depend on whether or not there's a feeling amongst the commission to go ahead and second it currently. Do your motion to recess to consult because then what you would do is come back into the position of discussing ultimately what that motion is. And then again, if for some reason after consultation there needs to be made an adjustment to that particular motion, you can do that after you come back out to make the adjustment to the motion or change it however you want to do that, but yeah.
Okay, thank you. That sounds right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McFarland. I suggest that we recess and consult with the city attorney. Can I get a motion to recess?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Rose. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Yu. Can I do a voice vote or, or no? I think we should do a-
Let's do a roll call.
Yes. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. McFarland?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Mr. Allred?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, so we are recessed.
What does that mean?
Do you have your motion written down so I can copy it verbatim?
Not so you can copy it verbatim.
Okay, so you did on the fly extemporaneously. Okay, we'll just take it from the transcript.
If you, if you got a recording, that's probably more precise of what I actually said.
That's downstairs.
Yes, it is, but I try and type out as much at the meetings.
We'll head upstairs to the conference room. We're free to discuss all of this at this point.
We should do it in public.
Not one-on-one.
We should do it in public.
Oh.
Just to talk to the floor.
Hi.
I thought I said, "Any?" I need you here. I didn't want to call you by your first name, but I'm, I'm all ready.
They don't move by Robert's name.
Boy, you're, you need that.
Did anybody write that down?
Oh, six. The guy was looking like, oh, it's only nine.
That God was looking like, oh, it's only now. Are we gonna talk about it here? You see, but they went into cold session. I don't know. But then something, you could have to go to Attorney General's office. Oh, yeah. Uh, 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 that should do that.
Okay, can I get a motion to exit recess and return to our discussion?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Mr. Hopkins. Uh, can we?
Let's do a roll.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Um, Ms. McFarland.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Yu.
Yes.
Mr. Allred.
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Okay, uh, so after consultation with the city attorney, uh, we feel that this is an appropriate motion, uh, but what we're gonna do is have Mr. Hopkins restate that motion.
Somebody else has good notes by now, yeah?
Or we'll have Mr. Rucci restate that motion.
Well, maybe together.
With, with consultation with Mr. Hopkins.
This may not be word for word, but there is a recording. And I'm going to, this time, make the motion in the conventional way with the becauses afterwards. Okay, uh, because that's the way, as I understand it, the motion will actually exist. So I move that we forward case number 2480 PUD 23 to the council with a recommendation that the city administration continue to work closely with applicant organizations, the neighborhood residents, including those in Champaign, the city of Champaign, and others, to mitigate the effects of construction and operation of Hope Village. Because much of this project has already been built before the PUD permit was granted. We are therefore in a procedural bind because our zoning ordinance states that no building permit or certificate of occupancy, if no building permit is required, shall be issued before issuance of a planned unit development ordinance, uh, permit, excuse me. Second, the commission has exhausted its discretionary and persuasive capabilities through holding a public hearing for the PUD process. Third, the innovative and unusual proposal presents likelihood of unexpected modifications or effects in construction and operation. And four, the location makes the effects problematic for a vulnerable neighborhood.
There was a five last time, if I was correct.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I think I made number five on the fly.
It was, Lou, is that the city of Urbana has already committed funding to this project?
Well.
They're already participating.
The, 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 if you want the full thing, I have to go to the recording because I added even more explanation as I went that's not in my notes.
Okay, well, we will refer to the recording for the original wording of your motion for that point.
Okay, so are we all good, uh, with the understanding of the motion that's on the table? Okay, and we have second, that was by Ms. McFarland, correct? Oh, no.
I just have a question regarding.
Okay, well, let's wait until we, um, I'm just, I just wanna get on record with our, who the second was again?
Yes, uh, Ms., I believe Ms. McFarland was the second.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, um, so is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. McFarland, if you want, this is your.
Can you, Ms. McFarland, can you put your mic close to you and on? Thanks.
The number four statement, please.
The location makes these effects problematic for a vulnerable neighborhood. And, and here, I'm reading directly from the notes.
Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Yu.
So, as my understanding, normally, we will send a case to city council with approval or disapproval. Sometimes with approval, we give conditions. But in this case, it seems to be that we really, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm asking, uh, we really don't have any way we can influence the project at the moment as a plan commission. And that is why we send this case along, not with approval or disapproval, but with, we don't have, there's not much plan commission can do, but we want to put this condition in here, letting you guys know, this is our discussion result. We feel there's something not really appropriate based on this condition, uh, based on our recommendation, so we are asking the next step, the approval authority to work with this condition. Is this why we are sending this recommendation this way?
Mr. Hopkins.
I think the simple answer is yes, and the slightly more complex answer is subtleties of language. Because the usual meaning of conditions, when we make a recommendation, is conditions that should be met prior to approval. And much of what this motion argues is that that's kind of pointless after construction. So that what we're focusing on is recommendations about continuing action and attitude after council action.
So, the wording means that, uh, we are, it's point into the future, not the near future of city council's, uh, discussion, but way in the future of the operation of it to make sure there's some guiding principles.
I agree with that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion?
Yes, uh, I feel that this is a very astute motion. It, it represents where we're at, and where the project is at, and where the neighborhood is at, and where the city is at, in a way that can in no way be captured by a simple up-down or condition approval. Uh, it, uh, it, it sends a message that, that there's a lot of work to be done, and, uh, and it just doesn't fit into the up-down or conditional box that we would normally operate under. So I appreciate this motion.
If I can give my thoughts on this, um, going into this, I was leaning towards not being able to support this project, but I think the way that Mr. Hopkins has worded his unconventional motion, um, this is something that I can support. I don't wanna grandstand about the site selection process, other than to say that this was very problematic, uh, before this project even got to plan commission, particularly for a project with the university and the city as a partner, uh, or whatever that relationship is. The process should have been much more transparent, the result, and the result is that the way this site was chosen has created distrust and a sense that the adjacent neighbors have been wronged. Uh, the commission wasn't involved in that site selection process, uh, never had a chance to provide input. We were presented with a proposed PUD, um, that was in a particular location with particular characteristics that we now know is partially built. Um, the preliminary PUD was recommended for approval to council by us with a key condition, that steps be taken to listen to the concerns of the community, and that the final site plan be responsive to those concerns. However, uh, in listening to the public in our meeting from November 9th during our public hearing and the public input, um, it doesn't seem like that's happened. Uh, the site plan's largely the same as was originally presented, with the exception of minor changes like moving a fence, um, and, you know, particularly in terms of how the site is accessed, which seems to have been one of the key concerns from the beginning, this hasn't changed. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, seems like we're ready for a vote. Uh, I was going to review the criteria for approving a PUD, but since that's not the motion that we have, I don't know that that's necessary. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, uh, mi-, um, sorry, Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
No.
Uh, Mr. Allred?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
And Ms. McFarland?
No.
Okay, that motion passes. Do we have a date when that case will go to council?
Uh, December 18th, it will go to committee of the whole.
Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business. We have two items of unfinished business, and the first case is a case that was tabled in our November 9th meeting. That is plan case number 2479 S23, a request by Marty Smith on behalf of Carl Foundation for preliminary plat, preliminary and final plat approval for the Hope Village subdivision. Uh, I wanna remind everyone that we're picking up this case in discussion, having heard from staff and the petitioner already, and that we allowed public input on this case during the last meeting, although preliminary and final plat approval does not require a public hearing. Before we can get started on this case, we need a motion to remove the case from table. Does anyone wanna make a motion?
So moved.
So a motion by Mr. Hopkins, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rose. Is there any discussion on the motion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hopkins? Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. McFarland?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Mr. Allred?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes. Okay, so is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners on this case? Ms. Hopkins?
Question, we're simultaneously doing preliminary and final?
That is correct.
I have this vague recollection that preliminary is only the commission and not the council?
That is how we've done it in the past, however, after conferring with our city attorney, I got clarification that they are to be taken together, so you are to make a recommendation to council on the, uh, combined preliminary and final plat.
Okay. So both will be the, under the authority of the council, neither will be under the authority of the plan commission?
That is correct.
Any other discussion on this case, or are we ready to make a motion?
So, belaboring this is pointless. The thing has been built. I move that we send this to the council with a recommendation of action.
Can you clarify what you mean by action, Mr. Hopkins?
As I just tried to clarify, this is now under the authority of the city council. Neither the preliminary or the final is based on action by this body.
Question for staff and possibly the city attorney, is that something that is workable in terms of the language?
I guess it's similar to the last one, as, as I indicated, in terms of the response to your question about the idea of the previous motion, and I take it kinda similar to how city council does it in committee of the whole, depending on the circumstances that they're dealing with, which is moving along to full city council where it's gonna have final action, ultimately with no recommendation. The language with regard to this process, and again, I, in touch and base with staff, I, I am in agreement that, you know, the way this is constructed and worded is not helpful. Uh, I get it in terms of trying to streamline the processes, if the preliminary and final are gonna look exactly the same, let's not have this separate months, one month this and the next month that, and delay the processes submitted altogether. So it appears to me that the language is driven of the idea of acting on this as a package, which is why I suggested that the vote here is ultimately in the package, really focused ultimately probably on the final plat, because that's really the, the key document. And again, this language in this, uh, ordinance also talks about that the commission's vote, um, is a recommendation of approval or disapproval of that package, if you will. Uh, if the decision of the commission in terms of nature of this particular motion is similar to the previous one, which is really passing along with ultimately no recommendation, um, you know, because they have final say on the final plat anyway, I think that's still consistent with the previous motion, uh, and also then accomplishes at least advancing this to the next stage of that process.
Thank you. Ms. Hopkins? Recommendation of action or no recommendation, what would be the more appropriate? Is there a way to advance it with no recommendation?
I think, I guess, as I shared, ultimately, sorry to jump in on you, Kevin, but as I shared in terms of how I view this in relation to how city council addresses this, that they ultimately position as a motion to advance, I guess, however you want to classify that, with no recommendation.
Okay. Do you want to amend your motion, Ms. Hopkins?
That's fine.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Hopkins to advance the case with no recommendation? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rose, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing no discussion, I'm going to assume that we are ready for a vote. Ms. Yu? Can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry. Jumping ahead, Ms. Yu?
This is for the motion to advance the case with no recommendation? For the plat?
Yes.
Ms. McFarland?
No.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Allred?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Do we have a date for council on that case?
Also December 18th.
December 18th.
For committee of the whole.
Okay. Okay, our next item of unfinished business is a review of plan commission bylaws, looking at changes to plan commission's meeting schedule for 2024. Is there a staff presentation on this?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll just briefly give sort of a I'll just make statements, I don't need to show any, anything for this. But basically, we're proposing to reduce the number of meetings of the plan commission to one per month, and for that meeting to be on the first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in council chambers here. There are, the proposed revisions are in your packet from, well, from last time. But essentially, it's, it's doing what I just said. So it's saying that regular made meetings shall be held on the first Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM in council chambers. Whereas right now, it said that meetings shall be held on the first Thursday following, or sorry, on Thursdays following the first and third Mondays of each month, which has always been kind of an odd way of scheduling things. So the couple, a couple of upshots of this proposal, we feel that this would I'd say the main things are reduce unnecessary time commitment for commission members and, and planning staff to focus city council's attention, so they would only be getting planning-related items once a month, and to really create a more intuitive schedule for everyone, knowing that it's one meeting first Thursday of the month. Typically, if you look at the record of how often we have meetings the past two years at the time of this writing, from October 21 to October 23, we held 18 meetings out of 49 that were, that were scheduled. 27 meetings were canceled due to lack of agenda items, three due to lack of quorum, and one for inclement weather. So we're only holding, or we've only held about 40% of the meetings that have been on the schedule over the past couple of years. So we feel that this change would really streamline things, make it easier for everybody, and should not be really onerous to applicants. So I, I will open it up for discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, any questions for staff? Ms. Hopkins?
Okay, so I get the general idea, I'm worried about the details. This, immediately following this is the paragraph about if it lands on a holiday, there's no meeting. As was the case with Thanksgiving this year, okay? But that's the only explicit statement about how we handle scheduled meetings. There's later stuff about being able to schedule a meeting with sufficient notice at the behest of the chair or whatever, there's complicated ways to do that. So as, as examples, 2025, which happens to just be a good year for these examples, the first Thursday of January in 2025 is January the 2nd. My prediction is that getting a quorum on January 2nd might be difficult because school will probably still be out, not just the university, but when the first is on the Wednesday. So and in 2025, the first Thursday is July 3rd. And I wish you great luck on getting me here the day before, three-day, the night before three-day weekend around July 4th. So I see two, those are just two examples, and, and there could be others, and there are even some in the coming year. I also understand the potential benefit of getting a clearer expectation about when the one meeting might be, but I think that's also problematic. For the case we've just been, the cases we've just been through, we had this problem twice. It came up first on June 21st, when we were able to get a quorum, which is not the first Thursday in June. We were not able to get a commission together the following first Thursday after the first Monday because of July 4th. Getting a quorum the first Thursday of August is maybe not the hardest, but probably not the easiest. So what I see is a potential of having a real problem actually getting stuff done. There are, there are oftentimes when we really want, we may only want 12 meetings a year, but we want two in April, two in May, none in August, none in December, you know, at least two in February. And it also depends on when these things come up, because we're often, as again with this case, up against hard deadlines that have created problems for us, break down to specific details. So it, it seems to me that we need to add, if we're going to do this, which I think is maybe a little more problematic than it seems, we have to add some specific way that we schedule additional meetings and the expectation that we're scheduling additional meetings. And I think for one thing, it might be good if those were on the third Thursday most of the time by expectation, so people have some clue what's going on. And, and the Thursday after the first Monday is there because of some perhaps completely previous, no longer relevant relationship to city council meetings. And your proposal suggested a different relationship to city council meetings. But if we have to have two meetings in a month, that relationship might come back, I'm not anyway, all of these things concern me. And finally, one of the responsibilities of the plan commission, as stated in the zoning ordinance, is, is the preparation of a comprehensive plan. And as we've demonstrated in the last few months, we need pretty desperately to get on to revising the zoning ordinance. Both of those things can be enhanced by the public hearing and public, in public study session by the plan commission. And so I'm also concerned that if we're going to actually make progress on the camp plan in the next couple of years, that we're going to need more meetings in the next 12 months, or that we would benefit from more meetings in the next 12 months than we have in the last, than we perhaps have needed in the last 12 months. So where that takes us, I don't know, but I'm I don't think this quite works in its current form.
Well, the, the beauty of this is that you cannot act on the bylaws tonight, since this is when your first hearing about it. Because the bylaws themselves state that you can only approve changes to the bylaws at the, at a meeting subsequent to when we first discuss it, so.
How many changes can we make between the first discussion and the next meeting?
I mean, I, I think it's, it's, it's open, we don't have to act at the, you know, at the next meeting, so we can, we can continue discussing it. I think at this point, since it's this late in the year, and since we're not going to have another plan commission meeting this year, we're already into next year, so this calendar wouldn't be able to take effect on January 1st in any case, so I believe we have a little time.
Anyway, so there's, there's the feedback for.
We will take your feedback into consideration and, and give it more thought and return.
Thanks, Ms. Hopkins. Yeah, I agree with the, the gist of that. I think, you know, there's, there's been a few times when we've continued cases, and when we've been able to continue it to a, to a meeting two weeks later. I think it's, it's much better in terms of being responsive to the applicant, and it's also helpful in terms of keeping things fresh in plan commissioners' minds, and particularly in terms of the input that we receive, so. I think yeah, it's a little concerning to me to lose that flexibility. I understand the benefits in terms of the, the administration of it, but I think it's nice to have that flexibility when the need arises to have that extra meeting. So however that's resolved, leave it up to you guys.
Okay, we'll, we'll give it some thought and then, and then come back.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, we don't need to do anything to move on from that then, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that brings us to new public hearings. We have no new public hearings, we have no new business. Public input, audience participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the plan commission for five minutes, uninterrupted on a topic of your choice? If so, please come forward and sign in and state your name.
Good evening, my name is Marion Harrington, and I'm here to talk about the access of Carver Drive. It was stated that there was not supposed to be any access through Carver Drive at this point with construction vehicles. And on November 28th, there was a semi truck at Carver Drive unloading two scissor lifts. At this particular date, there were cars on both sides of the street, and there's barely enough room for the truck to even get in there. The street is not wide enough to accommodate any large vehicles like that. Well, they blatantly disregard the fact that they're not supposed to be coming through there anyway. And they had a hell of a time backing that truck out there. So obviously, they're not paying attention to none of our concerns. They're not listening to anything you guys have told them of not coming through Carver Drive, and they're doing it anyway. So it just kind of makes us think that, you know, hey, we're just spinning our wheels, and nobody's listening to us. Since then, the city, we had to call the City of Champaign, and they brought out barricades, concrete barricades. Hopefully, this will deter them from coming through Carver Drive at this point. So we're just here to let you know that things are still going on and still not in our favor. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Can someone take the mic over there?
To the Urbana, the chair, I guess, right? Mr. Allred?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you the chair, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Could you state your name, please? Could you state your name, please, for the record?
I'm going to give my name at the end, but I will give it in the beginning, if, if you so desire. I'm Reverend Evelyn B. Boy Underwood, J.D., Ph.D. To the Urbana, the Chair of the Urbana Plan Commission and members and staff, and of course, to the audience. The Ministerial Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Facinity stand in solidarity with the concerns of George Washington Carver Park, Crispus Attucks, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Dr. Ellis subdivisions. Others in the surrounding communities who are in opposition to, in opposition to the location of Hope Village. We are not opposed to housing the homeless. We do agree with the many others who are in opposition to the location of Hope Village and the many concerns relating to process. Seven of them are, number one, access through Carver Park. Number two, lack of attention to Carver Park infrastructure. Three, public health, safety, and well-being. Number four, no environmental impact assessment with neighboring residents or the community. Five, open transparency with community engagement, specific programs, and medical services to be used at this facility. Number six, what is the value added to the community, many have asked? Question mark. Number seven, propose a proper notification process for all changes made and to be made in the future. We trust, the Ministerial Alliance of Champaign-Urbana and Facinity trusts that we can work together to have an equitable solution so we are able to move forward. Thank you. Did I say I was Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I signed back there, do I need to sign again? Oh, fine, yes.
Are you able to walk?
Good evening, my name is Terry Townsend, I, former vice chairman of the Housing Authority of Champaign County. I served there for 10 years. We experienced some very difficult times there, as you're experiencing tonight, and hopefully that will change. But I want to just read to you a couple of things that I jotted down. I was going to give a presentation tonight, I was hoping to do that, but, but at any rate, I want you to hear these things. I'll, I'll reiterate these when we go before the council. I'll, I'll reiterate these when we go before the council. Whereas the George Washington Carver subdivision, neighboring residents and stakeholders repeatedly have voiced support for the proposed tiny houses called Hope Village, but the neighborhood, the stakeholders and the citizens do not want to be a supply chain for experimentation. Two, whereas the applicant repeatedly stated that the purpose of Hope Village is to serve the medically fragile individuals. Be clear, that is not a HUD definition. I don't know where that definition came from. I contacted HUD. They, they said they never even heard of it. But applicants state in their 501(c)(3) Articles of Incorporation for Hope Village Incorporated, the purpose of Hope Village is, and listen to this, provide and/or support the provisions of health and support services to individuals who are suffering from homelessness, chronic transitional housing arrangements, and chronicle, and chronic inability to afford permanent housing in Urbana, Illinois, or other suitable geographical areas. Now, I think you're clear. This is a much broader charge than serving medically fragile individuals. It informs, and it raises significant questions about every aspect of this development. I'm not going to go over everything, but whereas the Hope Village detention basin or pond will be a breeding ground for mosquitoes, transmit diseases, and because of its close proximity to the George Washington Carver and Christmas Attucks subdivision, will be a clear health and safety hazard. I have never, in the 10 years I've traveled this country, seen a detention pond or retention pond, whatever you want to call it, that close to a, a house, a resident. I mean, that, that detention pond is about from, I don't know how many feet, but it's from that exit sign to about over here where Kevin is sitting. It's that close. It just blew my mind. Whereas Hope Village Detention Basin Pond is an attractive nuisance, and council knows what that term is, it will be appropriate at any stage of development of the Hope Village for neighboring residents to seek injunctive relief. Now, as we move into these legal questions, I just want to talk about this one thing, about traffic, the traffic impact studies. You simply have not been told the truth. I look at, was it called Trinity? I look at what they said. That, that's, that simply have not been, this, this body, the city of Urbana, has not been told the truth on, on what the traffic problems are. Whereas the traffic impact studies are biased, self-serving, and use the wrong metrics to measure the negative impact traffic will have on quality of life of the George Washington Carver subdivision. Traffic is not just about car ownership of Hope Village residents. It's also about fire trucks, service trucks, ambulances, Hope Village residents, Hope Village staff, University of Illinois students, and Hope Village family and friend, and friends, and this also includes the residents themselves. And if you would go back and look at the city of Champaign, there, and I did, their traffic service requests, and the traffic control orders, and the state statutes, you see that people are just simply saying there won't be a lot of traffic there, based on their opinion that the residents won't have cars. It's much, much more than that. And lastly, I agree with what some other people have been saying about, you don't hear us. You're not listening to us. This plan commission, the last meeting and this meeting, you did a wonderful job trying to straighten out a mess. That's what you did, and I thank you for it, and I thank you for your service. One last comment, what my recommendation tomorrow is going to be, that we ask the University of Illinois to recuse itself from this partnership.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else wishes to address the commission? All right, if not, we'll declare audience participation closed, move on to the staff report. Do we have a staff report?
We do not.
And do we have a study session?
No.
And I'm assuming we don't have a closed session?
Correct.
I just want to check close, quickly with the city attorney, if we are good in terms of findings of fact for the motions.
Yes, I guess I'll answer it that way, because I think there was enough explanation, given at the time both of those motions were made, that I think staff was able to go and put it together. And realistically, they're most important when you're talking about the motion to either approve or disapprove, to ensure that there's actually some basis for those as well. So I think within discussions for those, both of those motions, I think you provided enough. Kevin or staff can kind of comment if they think that I'm accurate on?
I'd say we have enough to go on, yes.
Okay, excellent.
Thanks.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.